Good evening, everybody. Today is January 19th. This is a Moscow City Regular Council meeting. Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Would you please rise and join the mayor and council in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Walter. Next up on the agenda is the oath of office administered to Jim Boland by Lori.
You're going that over here?
Yep, you'll be down there, Jim.
I, James Boland, raise your right hand, sorry. I, James Boland, do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho
And that I will faithfully discharge
And that I will faithfully discharge
The duties of council member
The duties of council member
In the city of Moscow, Laot County, Idaho.
In the city of Laot County? No, in the city of Moscow, Laot County, Idaho, yeah.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I'm signed.
All right. Okay, we will move on to item number two, council reorganization by outgoing president. Dan Kraschkin, Dan, you have got the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. On January 11th, after our committee meetings, we met to do our council organization. And we're putting these forward for confirmation by the council tonight. Council president, we elected Art Beckey. Council vice president, we elected Jim Boland. The administrative committee will be myself, Jim Boland, and John Weber. Public Works Finance Committee will be Art Beckey, Walter Steed, and Catherine Bonzo. And then for the other city standing commissions, for the Arts Commission, I'll be serving. Building Code Advisory Committee, Walter Steed will be the liaison. Fair and Affordable Housing, Art Beckey is continuing with that. Farmers Market Commission, Walter Steed is going to take Wayne's place on that. Historic Preservation Commission, Catherine Bonzo. Human Rights Commission, John Weber. The Moscow Pathways Commission will be Jim Boland. Parks and Recreation Commission, I will continue to serve. Planning and Zoning Commission, Catherine Bonzo. Sustainable Environment Commission will be Art Beckey. Transportation Commission will be Jim Boland. And the Tree Commission will be John Weber. And then we have other appointments. For the 1912 Center Facility Committee, the mayor will appoint Catherine Bonzo. And the council will confirm. The 1912 Center Use Committee, the mayor will appoint Walter Steed, and the council will confirm that. The Airport Board will continue to be our public, our member of the public will continue to be John Kimberling. Airport Board Vice Chair, by the rules of the Airport Board, will be Mayor Lambert. For the Clearwater Economic Development Association, Jim Boland will serve. By their bylaws, the Chamber of Commerce Board will have Mayor Lambert. The Clearwater RC&amp;D, Jim Boland will continue to serve there. For the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department, Walter Steed will continue, as he will with the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee. For the Palouse Knowledge Corridor, I will serve on that. And then, as we'll see a bit later here, John Weber and Art Beckey will continue on the Urban Renewal Agency, but the mayor has that as an appointment a little bit later. And then on the WICOM Executive Board, we are designating the police chief as our member on that committee. So, Mayor, I present these to the rest of the council if somebody, and I'll make a motion to approve them if everybody's all right with that.
And I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Dan and a second by Walter to approve the list of council president Art Beckey, vice president Jim Boland, as well as administrative committee Dan Kraschkin, Jim Boland, John Weber, Public Works and Finance, Art Beckey, Walter Steed, and Catherine Bonzo, and as well as all the standing city commissions and committees that Dan had said, and other appointments. With that, I will start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 And I.
Okay, so those are your new council president and vice president and commission members. And what we will do is we will take a five-minute reset, recess here to reshuffle here, 7:05, we'll adjourn at 17. So we'll get things. Okay, with that, we will start the meeting again at 7:07. And the next topic on the agenda is a consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we accept the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by John, a second by Jim to accept the consent agenda as is. I will start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, folks, we're moving along quite nicely here. Let's see, number four is mayor's appointments. And it's my pleasure to bring before the council two appointments, city appointments. Berto Sorrello of the Farmers Market Commission, expiration term 12/31/2018. And Dennis Wilson, Planning and Zoning Commission, expiration to be 12/31/2020. I would seek an approval.
Your arid move that we accept the slate of appointments.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Dan and a second by John to accept these two appointments. I'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 And I.
Okay, then we've got, there's two other appointments that concerns council, folks, and that is on Urban Renewal Agency and one for a one-year turn. John Weber with expiration at 12/31/2016. And Art Beckey, Urban Renewal Agency, expiration 12/31/2017. I'd entertain a motion as well.
I would move to approve those appointments.
Second.
Okay, a move by Dan, a second by John. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, now with that, I know we got Dennis out there. Dennis, you want to stand up? Dennis Wilson, he just got appointed to Planning and Zoning. Thank you very much, Dennis. Dennis, if you want to get up and say a few words, you're welcome to do it. You don't have to, but it's up to you. Okay. I've known this guy for a couple of decades now, and I'm tickled to have him on as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner. Thank you, Dennis. Is Berto here? I do not believe so. And I always like to take a few minutes and, and the volunteerism for our public to serve on these commissions for four- and five-year terms and doing it a number of times is a big deal for us here in this city. I certainly, as the mayor, appreciate everybody that volunteers and takes their time and efforts to do that because, and we've got a wonderful community with that. We've got so many great volunteers out there, so thank you very much. And thank you, Dennis, for being a part with us tonight. Okay. Item number five, public comment, mayor's response period. This is a period of time that anybody can get up and talk in front of us as long as it's something that is not on tonight's agenda or in front of Planning and Zoning or the Board of Adjustments. If you wish to speak, please come up and state your name and address. Seeing nobody rushed to the podium, I will move on to the next thing, which is noise ordinance report for the police call response review. Chief David Duke will give us the presentation. Chief?
Evening, Mayor and council. At the beginning of each calendar year, I've always been asked to present a report on the call response by our police department to noise complaints throughout the community. This was at the calling of a change in our ordinance back in 2008, when the council made a decision at that point to give police officers the right and empowerment to write citations for noise complaints instead of requiring a citizen to provide a signature and appear in court. Based on that, I have a short report to present to you for last year. The three questions that were asked in the report is how many calls did we receive through the calendar year? What police action as far as enforcement? And what the outcome of that enforcement was? So you can see back for 2015, we responded to 493 noise complaints. In those complaints, we issued two citations. And both citations were challenged in court with a finding of guilty on both with a fine of $255. Going back over the summary over the last six years, you can see that when we changed our ordinance, we were close in the 900 range when the ordinance allowed officers to start responding without the need of citizen involvement. You can see a slow decline over the last six years. And we are at our lowest at this point, at this time, to include both calls and enforcement actions. And based on this, I'm open to any questions you may have.
Well, chief, one of the things that I always like looking at this every year, because in 2008, when this became, when we put this ordinance in place, I was on city council as well as John and a number of others. But I remember when we had our public hearings and things on this, a little bit of an outcry about how problematic that would be. And these members right here tell us exactly what's happening. They've gone down. And the reason they've gone down is because when a police officer goes somewhere and tells somebody to behave themselves, they do it. Before, we had to go through this 24-hour drill or whatever it was. I can't remember exactly how it was. So this is working for us by seeing these statistics. And I'm pretty tickled about that. Walter, you had?
Yes, Chief, I didn't warn you, I was going to ask this because I just thought of it. Do you know the circumstances of the two citations out of 493 contacts?
Of the two citations, I believe we had responded the same location to the same person a total of three times before the citation was issued.
And that, that's within a 24-hour period, or is that how that works?
Mostly over what we look at as a two-to-three week period.
Okay. So multiple, multiple problems, non-responsive?
Non-responsive and non, I guess, an indifference attitude to the ordinance and their neighborhood.
Do you, do you know if there's been any problem with those addresses since?
No, sir, not at this point. But we're just starting a new year, so we'll keep an eye on it.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Dan?
Chief, I could probably answer it for you, but what's our busiest month?
Our busiest month, usually is September, when the kids get back. Or I should say, the students.
Young adults.
Well, the weather's nice, and they got a lot of money in, so it's into the summer form, so. Okay, other comments for the chief?
No. Good job.
Well, thank you very much, Chief Duke. Appreciate that. Annual report. Okay, we were going to move on. Item number seven, Pullman Moscow Regional Airport Economic Impact. Gary Redner is here to start the thing for us. Gary, you have the question.
Thank you, your honor. My introduction will be mercifully short. The Pullman Moscow Regional Airport Board retained Professor Steve Peterson from the University of Idaho to conduct a study of the economic impacts of the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport. Dr. Peterson has a PowerPoint presentation. And Tony Bean, the executive director of the airport, also has a presentation to the council tonight. I'm informed by Dr. Peterson that the written report won't be ready for another couple of weeks as they polish it up. But because this was scheduled and the information is relevant, he'd like to be able to present the presentation tonight, and we'll get the written reports at a later time. So with that, I believe Tony's kicking this off, so Tony Bean.
Hey, actually.
Hello, Tony.
Mayor, council, thanks for having myself and Professor Peterson. This was an interesting process. It was one of the hard things to really quantify with the airport and with the project and what the future of the project could be, was really trying to get an idea of economically, how, how does the airport even work with our region? That was a large question that kind of came out through the information that we were given to Steve so he could get, and just a mind picture of what the airport is to the region as a whole, and then come up with some quantifiable data to say, okay, how does this actually impact? How much, how much money is actually going in, going out, and those kinds of things? And what is the value of the airport to the communities that, that support it, and vice versa? So to begin with, we've used the railroad adage before. It is one of the favorites of the mayor. And it is actually a very apt description of what an airport is today versus what a railway was in the 1800s. Communities that had railroads, they did well. And communities where the railway pulled out or left, they started to decline. And in our case, air travel is a very similar kind of a, of a means to get goods and services in and out of our communities. It is definitely one of the biggest things that, that I look at with the, with the airport in general and the air service is quality of life. We live in a wonderful place, whether it's Moscow on the Idaho side or it's Pullman on the Washington side. People that live here, everybody that I talk to that chooses to live in Pullman and Moscow, they choose it for very specific reasons because it is a wonderful place. But the access to that and being able to keep, you know, your health care and the universities and our tech sectors and employment and the other pieces that really go into making Pullman and Moscow what they are, a lot of that really comes through transportation sectors. And we are very geographically isolated in a lot of means. And the air transportation system that we're afforded access immediately to the system, and you can go anywhere, is definitely of a large benefit. So the airport, it states, opened in 1932. The conversation with the airport was actually started in 1932. And the unique thing about this particular airport, it is the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport, and it's been a joint effort since it started. So the operations, that's landing and takeoff down towards the middle there, 71-based aircraft, of that 71, four of them are jet aircraft that are corporate fleet with SEL. Horizon Air, Alaska Airlines subsidiary, they're now to four flights daily directly to Seattle-Tacoma. We went from three flights to now where four flights were no longer tagged. It used to be tagged with Moscow, or not with Moscow, excuse me, with Lewiston, which means the plane would leave Lewiston, land in Moscow-Pullman, and then go on to Seattle. Since November, they've gone completely to a larger schedule, three flights a day. It's the last year, calendar year end, we broke a record going over 40,000 deployments and 80,000 total traffic through the airport terminal. This year, we went over 50,000 deployments and 100,000 people through the airport terminal. And next year is likely to grow, continuing that trend. So the realignment project really came down to the airlines' choice for how to become solvent. Airlines really got hit very hard over 9/11 and subsequent years past that. And their largest costs are labor and fuel. And as fuels went up, now it's, it's getting better now. But for a long time, we'd get small aircraft, and you had a lot of frequency. And the airlines figured out how not to go bankrupt. They went through a bunch of bankruptcies, and they went through a significant, significant amount of mergers. And to figure out how to get out of that, they started getting screamed at by their shareholders. You'd get value in a company, and then the company tanks. And airlines became very cost-conscious and very capacity-driven. So they started going to, well, how do we, how do we save money on fuel? You get bigger planes and less frequency. Our issue is the bigger plane and the less frequency. We're filling the larger plane, but the airport is not built runway and taxiway-wise. It's too close, simply too close together for the size of aircraft that we land. We have averaged $2.5 million a year in federal grants for the last five years, and they're tied to that commercial service. Our, our grant capability is tied to the commercial need. And then the last bullet point there is always the big sticker is the cancellations. Because of the way the current runway is aligned and the terrain around it, we cancel an average of 124 flights in and out of Pullman Moscow Regional. But even with the cancellations, we're breaking records annually and 20% growth. One of the great things about Alaska Airlines in general is they were able to take advantage of, hear about Next Gen and what the airlines are doing with GPS technology. And they have private approaches now that they developed and paid for out of their airline coffers to get into Pullman Moscow Regional at significantly lower standard than, than they used to be. The public approach says you can't land at the airport unless you can see the airport from 550 feet up and a mile and a half out. Alaska's procedure says that a mile and a half just shrank to a mile, and 550 feet turned into 320 on one end and 375 on the other. It's already saved us, estimating right now, since they instituted that in November, it's already saved us probably 30 cancellations that we would have normally canceled last year that we haven't had to cancel this year. So as the technology gets better, it's not going to be instrument landing capability until we can move the runway. But they're doing everything they can to make the reliability as, as good as we can get it. Air service, air travel's important. And when you're rural and you're geographically isolated and you're as globally connected as the Palouse is, whether it's education, or wheat, or garbanzo beans, or technological innovations, we're on the global market. And it is increasingly competitive for our industries to be able to attract the professionals that they want and the doctors that we're able to get and the technological innovative people that would normally go maybe somewhere else. And the air service is a huge attractant for the quality of life that, that those individuals want to have from an employer. So retention, as well as that, the attracting the good jobs and capabilities that we want to have for our employers in our region is, is very dependent on the air service. Higher education, one of the cool things that came out of this report as I was going through the process with Steve and handing him a whole bunch of information, was really understanding that higher education is a large piece and always has been a large piece. But there are things that are spinning out of the higher education market in Pullman and Moscow and the universities themselves. We're dependent on those. That's a lot of direct employment, 13,946 people locally. And direct research dollars, 441 million. It's a sobering amount of how much activity actually comes in and out. High tech, this is one of the large pieces that is really being driven. And it's rightly so through the growth and expansion of Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories and that company's belief in keeping their headquarters in the Palouse. Four jets are stationed at the airport, and they travel very consistently. But you've got a lot of spin-off firms now that, that have a lot of business interests with SEL and other businesses in the region. And it's growing just amazingly fast. And Steve will speak to that with the numbers that he was able to find. I didn't realize how fast and how unique that actually is in this particular part of the region. But they're highly mobile. And they need to have that traffic capability to be able to get around. So the future growth and the future capabilities of that particular sector are very, very keyed into transportation needs in and out. And air service is, is the largest piece that we have for that right now. The realignment is simply to meet standards. We're going to, C3 aircraft has to do with how fast, the C part is how fast an aircraft comes into a runway, and the 3 is size. But it is to, designed to meet Q400, which is our current aircraft that services the region. It will also meet the 737, which we utilize, the 737s on both universities to transport athletics. And the shift is to take care of issues and cost as well as to get a CAT1, what they call a CAT1 instrument landing system, which is at 200 feet decision height for a pilot in that half a mile. So it's a little small, but this is the, the budget breakdown with a contingency fund of $119 million for the project. The project is still targeted at 89. We're still doing everything we can do to get efficiencies through all of those things. And there's a lot of, just analysis and making sure that we're making prudent decisions engineering-wise and, and working with the FAA and trying to find all the efficiencies that we can without sacrificing the quality that we're going to need into the future with the runway. And with that, we get into the numbers, and I'm going to hand it over to Steve to be able to talk towards that. I will be available at the end, and I'll come back up for questions that anyone on the council or the mayor may have.
Thank you, Tony. Welcome, Dr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So modeling the transportation sector is, is very challenging. And particularly air travel, because it's part of the infrastructure that supports all other industries and services in the regional economy. And so I spent a significant portion of my time in the study examining these regional linkages through all of the manufacturing and service industries that we have in the, we have in the regional economy. So I build a, I built several models. I built a Palouse model, which was Whitman and, Whitman and Laot County. And I built a Quad County model, which is all four counties in the regional economy. And then I built also a Washington State model. I used the Washington State model for the construction economic impacts. And the Quad County model for most of the other impacts. And then the Palouse model for high-technology manufacturing. Our four-county region is a unified economy. And most of the flows in the county go, go east-west with some important north-south linkages. But the, but the primary, but the primary trade flows are east and west, between Moscow and Pullman and between Lewiston and Clarkston. And indeed, if you take a trip down to Lewiston, it's almost like you're in a completely different place and a different culture, right? So there are important linkages north-south, but the primary, the primary linkages are east-west. These are my estimated economic impacts for the, for the construction. And these are for five years, annually for five years. So I estimated it would create about 93 direct jobs in the regional economy. And then that would translate into about $21 million in gross regional product, $45 million in sales, and the total jobs impacts would be about 226. Total local and state taxes would be about 2.5 million a year. So anytime you bring in $119 million of federal, federal dollars into a regional economy like ours, it has a big impact. And that impact has already started. So it'd be between 2015 and 2019. The next step was to conduct an impact assessment on the airport's annual operations. And the conclusion is it would, with the multiplier effects, it would support 300 local jobs, 17.4 million in gross regional product, and about 2.72 million in local and state taxes. So if the airport were to completely vanish, the economy would shrink by this amount. And this is a more detailed breakout of those economic impacts. And I'll just briefly go through the categories. The first one is the impacts of the airports operating in capital. It annually brings in about $2.5 million in federal grants and contracts in addition to its annual operating expenditures. The support services are things like rental car agencies and other firms that are, that are consulting firms and other support services in the regional economy. General aviation is interstate, includes interstate aviation, and it includes Schweitzer's Engineering's four jets that they have at the airport plus the general services of managing their corporate headquarters out of Pullman. Commercial aviation.
Commercial aviation includes the TSA employees and Alaskan Air, Horizon Air employees and a few other employees as well. And then the commercial visitor spending and the general aviation spending, I took that methodology from a state of Idaho impact to study on the PUW Airport. They estimated, they did a survey, and that's the reason why I adopted that methodology in which they estimated that about half of the employment passengers coming through the region are visitors. The commercial visitors spent about $300 per person and the general aviation was 170. So I adjusted the numbers for the new employment numbers and for inflation. And then I also was very conservatively divided them into half, assuming that half would get here anyway, and then attributed half of that to the airport being in Moscow-Pullman. Because clearly if people, if the airport didn't exist, a lot of people would be staying in Spokane or Lewiston. The travel arrangements would vary out of other areas as opposed to out of this regional This is a comparison of my study with various other types of studies that have been done. The first one is the Washington Department of Transportation. I adjusted all these numbers to 2014 numbers to make them comparable, but the Washington Department of Transportation estimated that PUW Airport would contribute 158 jobs. My study was estimated 300 jobs. Mead and Hunt did an estimation in which they estimated using a national parameter what the cost of diverted or canceled flights were. I inverted that into a benefit of those flights that aren't canceled and aren't diverted and then imputed the jobs and sales impacts from that. So that's an imputed study. And then the Idaho Department of Transportation, their AEROS study adjusted the numbers for inflation. They estimate the annual impacts at 349 jobs and $31 million in sales. And then Mead and Hunt used an Oxford economics study that estimated at the national level, airports contribute about 5% of gross domestic product. I drilled that out and took 1.5% of that as the direct airport operations to be conservative and came up with 684 jobs. So my impacts, I believe, are conservative and I think reasonable for the airport and the regional economy. The airport is growing, beating all forecasts. It's growing fast. It grew by, its employment increased by 20% over the last year, and it looks like it's going to have another banner year this coming year. They had over 100,000 passengers go through the airport. Based on its total market, what we call its catchment region, there was, in this market region, there were an estimated 135,000 employments. The airport's proportion that is captured has increased from 26% to 37% based on this previous Mead and Hunt forecast. If we captured all of the air travelers in our market region, the economic impacts of the airport would rise from 300 jobs to 814 jobs. So I did a forecast, what would happen if we were actually to capture all of the air travelers in our market region. And I think we're on our way to capturing a good share of those. And that's the market region of the airport. And these are the impacts if we were to capture all of the passengers in this market region. There've been a number of forecasts going out to year 2038. I think there's probably 10. I've seen 10 of them. I took two. One was the Mead and Hunt's baseline and their unconstrained forecast, just to have two, just to present to what I thought were reasonable forecasts. The baseline forecast was adjusted for current employment numbers. So by 2038, under the previous Mead and Hunt baseline forecast, employments would reach about 100,000 by the year 2038. And then their unconstrained forecast, which would be their high-level forecast, would be about 150,000. And using their baseline forecast, I estimate that going by their previous forecast rates that the airport will, you know, holding everything constant, will support 744 jobs by the year 2038 based on these growth patterns. And that's a graph of those forecasts. And this is a graph of the potential of the forecasted economic impacts out to 2038. Air service is woven into the fabric and infrastructure of the entire economy, which makes it difficult to model, quite frankly. It's embedded in every industry in the region. It underlines and supports most of the Quad County and Palouse industries, and as a result, I spent a fair amount of time examining the regional economy and the linkages to air travel and other forms of transportation as well. As I talked about earlier, the primary trade flows are east-west with some important north-south linkages. Political flows in both states, well, in Idaho and particularly run north-south, which creates a lot of logistical issues, given that the political boundaries don't follow economic boundaries. In Whitman County, they had a 20, basically a 20% job growth versus a 16% population growth. This was from 2001 to 2015, which shows that Whitman County has become an important job exporter in the regional economy. They have become a growth powerhouse. Latah County is a job importer. It had a 6.4% job growth over the same period of time. These are cumulative rates, by the way, versus a 9.7% population growth. So our economies are really, both in the Palouse and in Lewis-Clark Valley, are woven tightly together. And a rising, as they say, a rising tide raises all boats. So a benefit to one community automatically becomes a benefit to the other. And that's why I think it's important for regional cooperation because a new firm coming into any part of the regional economy will benefit everybody within the regional economy. And I think that's one important conclusion of the study. Whitman County's become a job leader in manufacturing. In fact, the first study I did on Whitman County, Whitman County was something like Sleepy Hollow. It almost had it projected like that. This was like 15 years ago or 20, probably 20 years ago now. And they have gone from Sleepy Hollow to be in the region's job creator. It's been absolutely amazing. And because of our tightly woven economy, Moscow has benefited as much from that growth as has Pullman. So their high technology manufacturing employment has increased astonishing, 228%. WSU has grown by 3,000 students at the same period of time. So WSU has grown substantially at Pullman, their Pullman campus, as has the high technology manufacturing. And this lays out the numbers in a hard-to-read spreadsheet there. The total jobs in the Quad County, all four Quad County region is about 80,000, is about 80,000 jobs and our population is about 149,000. This is as of 2015. This is an economic impact of the region's top industries, the four county region. And I'll go from the largest one to the small, to, and quote, the smallest. The first is higher education. Their direct employment is nearly 14,000, and that's conservative. If you start factoring in all of the graduate students and everything else, it could easily hit about 22,000 direct jobs. The total jobs and apparent, the total jobs including the multiplier, including the multiplier effects, is about 26,000 jobs in the regional economy. This is just from higher education. And there's nearly 36,000 students, of which about 32,000 are on the Palouse. The next in line there is high-tech manufacturing services, an industry that barely existed 20 years ago. It's become an industrial powerhouse that centered, most of that is centered out of the Palouse and has been an important driver in our economy. It now supports nearly 7,170 jobs. And this includes, this includes Schweitzer Engineering, most of the firms in the Pullman Industrial Park and the Alterus Technology Center here in Moscow, as well as a slew of other smaller firms in the regional economy. The payroll from these high-tech firms is about 261 million dollars, and most of these are living wage jobs. Then it's agriculture, very important industry in the region, about 4,000 direct jobs and about, close to 6,000 total jobs. Wood products manufacturing is still quite important. This includes Clearwater Paper out of Lewiston, the Bennett Mill at Wilma, Idaho Forest Group in Lewiston, and the Bennett Mill in Princeton, and then there's a mill in Troy and some smaller operations as well. And it also includes forestry and logging. And construction, about 3,000 direct jobs and about 3,300 total jobs. And then we have a fairly, what's been a fairly rapidly growing ammunition and small arms manufacturing center, most of that out of Lewiston, but there's also a firm up in Princeton employing nearly 1,700 people and with the multiplier effects, about 3,000. And then finally, all the other manufacturing, which is no small number either, is about 1,200 jobs, indirect jobs and about 2155 total jobs. So the thing, the takeaway from this is we have a marvelous economy here. It is extremely diverse. It is a manufacturing and high-tech center that is growing fairly rapidly, moving, growing rapidly even in the recession in 2009. You know, we have three major universities and probably half a dozen smaller ones. So we, one of the, one of the takeaways from this is how diverse the economy is. Of those industries, the two most dependent on air travel is higher education and high-tech And they're both, I think, air travel is essential for both of them and the PUW Airport is essential to both, for the attraction of research grants, for the, you know, to attract top-notch faculty and staff, to, for student recruitment, for our sports teams. The high-tech manufacturing service, Schweitzer operates four jets. And at Schweitzer, and Schweitzer Engineering's donated two-plus million dollars for the airport expansion, shows a real strong dedication for it. This shows the regional integration. This is commuting patterns. Whitman County exports about nearly 2,200, 2,200 jobs and Whitman County imports about the same number. These are net numbers, by the way, but most of the flows are between Whitman and Latah County. In the north and to the south, it's between Lewiston and Sooton County. So it's a strong indication of the integration. That outflow then brings to our coffers about 150 million dollars a year. That's an inflow and it's about 140 million dollars outflow out of Whitman County. So again, it shows the regional integration. Then I estimated what the benefit to Moscow and Latah County was from that income inflow, and I estimated that it creates about 818, excuse me, 818 jobs, about 42 million in gross regional product and contributes about 33,100,000, well, excuse me, 4.6 million in state and local taxes. Whitman County next year, according to MZ's forecast, will exceed Nespuris County as the largest employer in the regional economy. For years, you know, Nespuris County has had that, has had that title, and Whitman County will surpass them for the first time. And this is just pointing out Schweitzer's, Schweitzer Engineering, which is the epicenter for the high technology manufacturing and service sector, that they have four, their corporate headquarters is in Pullman, and they have five corporate jets. And if a region is going to have their corporate headquarters in your community, they're going to rely heavily on air service, and it is an important attribute for keeping, for keeping and enhancing that industry. And this shows the direct jobs for the four counties and the Quad County region in the U.S. So this is high-tech manufacturing and service jobs growth from 2000 to 2015 and then a, and then a forecast, this is an MZ forecast, from 2015 to 2025. So you can see the Palouse grew 149% versus the national average of 21%. This is, then factors in the multiplier effects. So factoring into the multiplier effects and most, this is in, this is in the Palouse. It's about 6,108 jobs and total compensation of over 200 million dollars, 222 million So a very important sector of the economy. This is all manufacturing jobs and high-tech, all manufacturing and high-tech service jobs in the region, astonishing, including the multiplier effects of nearly 18,000 jobs. And total compensation, nearly 700 million dollars a year. What would happen, I did a scenario, what would happen if we lost the airport? If the alignment project was not done? The first part of that would be an immediate loss of the construction, the 119 million dollars coming in on the construction jobs and 226 jobs annually for five years. We would lose that. That's an immediate impact. The short term would be the eventual loss of commercial air service as the PUW Airport would transform into a general aviation airport. I estimate about three-quarters of the impacts would be lost consisting of about 225 jobs and 13 million gross regional product and a loss of about $2 million in state and local taxes. In the longer term, firms, the high-technology firms that have their corporate headquarters here would likely move those corporate headquarters or relocate their transportation services elsewhere. The loss of federal funding to the PUW Airport would cause decay of the infrastructure, which probably means we would lose most of the general aviation business except maybe crop dusters in the long term. And that would be a loss of maybe 200 total jobs and about 12 million in gross regional Longer-term impacts would be the potential loss of a major high-technology employer or employers, creating an additional 3,400 jobs and 200 million in gross regional product. And in the long term, would be a general loss of regional competitiveness, greater difficulty in attracting new firms to the regional economy, reduction in regional traction for professional employees and researchers, slowing of university growth and tourism and visitor spending. So these would be the longer-term, longer-term impacts of the loss of air service. One of the, one of the things I've done in my various studies over the years is that it's important to protect your basic industries in your region, to protect them and nourish them. There's a tendency to take them for granted. I did an impact last year on Clearwater Papers, their, their 160 million dollar investment project, which is essential for keeping them competitive in the global market down in Lewiston. And they were requesting a small tax break from Nespuris County while the construction was going on, and I did an analysis supporting that. But I remember one person saying, "Well, what's the big deal if they just left?" You know, what's the big deal? Well, I estimated it would create a crater in Nespuris County of about 20% of their economy. And that's analogous to the high-tech sector that we have here. What would happen if we lost the high-tech sector? It would create a crater in our regional economy that would be felt for decades. And so I think it's really important not to take your basic employers for granted and to support them in any way that you can to keep them competitive in the regional and global markets. Any questions? Thank you.
Dr. Peterson, that was a really awesome presentation. I jotted down a couple of notes, and some of the notes that I jotted down, you showed a slide of overall employment, roughly the numbers were 53,000, and out of that 53,000, 33,000 of those were high-tech as well as higher education combined, the two- 33,000 of those were high-tech as well as higher education combined, the two highest factors, which represents 62.2% of our total employment in this area. You can see, to me, it's very evident that as we go on, that's a possibility of continued growth, and we don't know what we cannot have here until we get positioned to do it. This airport is such an impact for the entire Palouse, and one of the neat things is we've got a number of different players working together to make this process happen. And in my view, and I'll continue to say this, is going to be a real engine driver and continue to go along and grow growth as we're going for not only our community but the entire, our entire area, which is good, it's win-win for all of us. And I think in this competitive world, and where we're headed in the United States and globally, I think that is a huge impact for all of us and for our future. The 2015 to 2025 jobs, you're looking for area alone as an impact of 36% increase, and what it has done already is 146% from the high-tech and the high education over the last 15 years. Those are phenomenal numbers. And some of the numbers you mentioned, you said you had some numbers were conservative, so they actually may be higher than some of those things that you pointed out.
Yeah. In terms of the impacts, I was attempting to be conservative in those numbers.
Which is good to be a conservative view. Catherine, you had a?
Yeah, I just have a question. And all this analysis was about our airport, and out of curiosity, how does the Lewiston Airport fit into this scenario?
Well, I didn't do an analysis of the Lewiston Airport.
I know you didn't.
Yeah. But most of our leakage isn't Lewiston, only 11%.
Okay.
The leakage is Spokane. So, there's not, so if the PUW Airport were to go away, I don't think, a little bit would go to Lewiston, but I think most of it's going to go to Spokane. So it's going to leak completely out of the economy. And one of the, there's several issues with this. One is that, again, our trade corridors are east-west. When people think here, they're looking west or they're looking east, they're not looking north and south. When you travel to Lewiston, you might as well be in a different state, quite frankly. I mean, it's a very different culture and a different world. And so the firms are tied to the PUW Airport and north, not to the Lewiston Airport south. And so, I don't expect, I don't expect that if the PUW were to go away, that the growth would shift down, would shift down to Lewiston. Yeah.
Jim? Dr. Peterson, in your pyramid of job growth, the Washington numbers are quite a bit lower, like 158 versus 300, what would you attribute that to?
Different methodologies. Yeah. I wanted to, what the goal of that little pyramid was, was to show that the numbers I had were reasonable. And so each one of those studies had a little different methodology. The methodology I followed, the closest one was the Idaho Department of Transportation's AERO study. But the basic difference is just differences in methodologies that they follow.
So they perhaps didn't, they were just including what was going on in Washington and not Idaho, or?
Well, I don't think they included, I don't think, off the top of my head, they included tourism in their analysis. So, it was basically a different approach. So, what both of those studies were, they were statewide studies that looked at each individual airport within the respective states. So they came up with a common methodology for both those studies, so that they could have a common benchmark to rate all of the airports within each state.
Dan, you had a?
Yeah. It's kind of piggybacks on what Catherine was asking. You know, on page 15 there, you were talking about how much, how many more boardings you'd have, and I'm like, "Well, is this closing down Lewiston?" And then that next map, you know, blew that out of the water with, you were showing how the service area was more north of, you know, basically north of Genesee, it looked like. Couple of other things, where on, in the aviation, you know, you had, you know, interstate, where's MedStar in there? Are they at the general aviation?
They'd be in general, I put them in general aviation.
Okay. And then you talked about, on page 11, the 226 five-year jobs, which is the construction, and then the next page, page 12, the 300, are those ongoing jobs that are going to continue after?
Yes.
Or is that just during the five?
No, the construction are for five years, they're annual for five years. The current estimation for the operation is what's actually in place right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then there was one more, oh, just a comment, I think, you really just showed the industry, quote-unquote, you know, I don't know how industrial a university is, but you know, it's a big employer. But you know, I just wanted to mention that that doesn't even count, you know, like hospitals or retail or any of those other service industries that would also probably benefit from whatever happens there.
Oh, they could, yeah.
So, you know, the fingers reach out a lot farther than even what you show, I think.
Yes. I focused, the industries I chose were clearly export industries. When you get into the rest of them, tourism and healthcare, they're both export and, they're both exogenous and endogenous, industries are harder to model that way, you know. What the export industries do, what we call export industries, these are industries that clearly, the primary revenues that they create are outside the regional economy, so they're bringing new money into the economy, and we can define, we can measure that in a very definitive way.
One point I want to make, and I'll get to you, John, is that you talked about Schweitzer Engineering there, and one thing that I do know is they employ 500 people that live in this city in 900 North County, and that just gives me a stomach ache to think in what would happen if they didn't have those jobs here, because it's a big deal for our community, huge for our overall wealth. John?
Yes, Dr. Peterson, not to put too fine a point on it, but I got from your presentation here that if this area, Moscow-Pullman area specifically, wants to continue growing at any sort of a rate that is even approaching what it has been in the last 15 years, we should probably continue on with this project and other projects like it.
Yes. Yeah. I mean, if you're recruiting a world-class researcher to one of the two universities, well, or one of the three big universities, right? And you Google Travelocity, and an airport, a local airport doesn't show up, what does that tell you about the community you're thinking about interviewing? I mean, just something as simple as that is perception, right? Or the same thing for an employer. I think air service is absolutely essential for both the attraction of top-rated employees and for startup firms as well. And one thing that Tony mentioned is that we sell a lifestyle here. We generally, the wages being paid by these firms are generally, are good wages by our regional standards, but, you know, compared to LA and Seattle, right, they tend to be less. What we sell here is a lifestyle, right? And that's what the airport helps cement and bring together is that lifestyle, the quality of life factors. And, you know, I look at the University of Idaho, and the employees that stay there, they stay there because of the lifestyle they have. Those that lifestyle doesn't fit, they tend to leave. And I think that's true, both employers and employees as well, and the airport helps facilitate that lifestyle.
Another point, interesting point that you brought up, is that the slippage is only 11% that would go down to Lewiston, so that tells you the importance of their airport as well. And that most of that slippage, if we closed, we'd go to Spokane, which would completely go out of this area. And, you know, the FAA is very interested in both these airports, and that point right there is probably one of the reasons why, because it's completely ingrained in both economies and significant. Walter, you got any points?
I think Jim covered mine on the triangle to some degree. I had trouble getting my head wrapped around a seven, six or seven times difference between one study and the other, and how many jobs there are. It makes me wonder, it's been 50 years since I took Econ 101, so makes me wonder the value of it.
Well, airports are, transportation is not an easy thing to model. You've got to model the, I mean, and it depends on, it depends upon everything that you're including in that basic study, right? So you've got the actual airport operation, you've got the federal dollars that come in, you've got all of the firms that depend upon the airport, you incorporate those into the analysis, you've got to make an estimation of tourism, the tourism dollars associated with it, and frankly, that's where the biggest variance was in all the studies, was the tourism numbers, and it always is. Tourism is difficult to measure. So, it isn't like, you know, if we were to do a comparative analysis of Clearwater Paper, give you an example of an industrial firm, and it's a fairly complex firm, but the estimates would be very similar. When you're doing something like an airport that's as complicated as you're going to get, you're going to get those kinds of variances.
You know, it's a terrific, getting a chance to see the numbers and the different things that you brought forward to us, and that, you know, there just is very evident to me that we continue to work together through collaborative efforts, this, not only this community, but the community of the entire Palouse, to make this work for us as a region, because it's just so doggone important with the universities, these two cities, these two counties. We cannot let this get by us, and the smaller outlining communities too as well, you know, Palouse-Garfield, Troy, Idaho, and so on and so forth.
Other questions for Dr. Peterson from council?
Thank you so very much for that wonderful report. We look forward to the written one, Dr. Peterson, when it is done, and thank you, Tony Bean, for your wonderful presentation and giving us an insight on everything with the airport. Thank you so much.
Good.
I got kind of caught up in that and kind of forgot where in the world we're at, so we'll move on to item number eight, which is the roll cart alley collection. Tim Davis, you have the podium, sir.
Morning, or evening, Mayor of Council. The city of Moscow is in the process of implementing a new single-stream recycling program scheduled to begin February 1st of 2016. The city previously issued a request for a proposal, or RFP, for modification of services for single-stream recycling to its sanitation service provider, Latah Sanitation, Inc. The response to the RFP was received back in March of 2015. The RFP response outlined several proposed changes to routing and minimization of alley service for the purpose of maximizing collection efficiency as well as reducing costs. As a part of the implementation process, the city and Latah Sanitation intended on collection of both garbage and single-stream recycling roll carts from within street rights of way and minimizing necessary collection of these roll carts from the alleys. This process has been successfully implemented in various Moscow neighborhoods over the past 12 months. Two of the larger process changes that I can recall was we switched 157 accounts north of the West A Street area from alley to street service, as well as 60-plus accounts down on Sixth Street shortly after we implemented the roll cart program, and that was mostly because of a safety issue down on Sixth Street with the parking on the north side of the street, but we did ask 60 accounts down through that area to relocate their roll carts for collection purposes. Within the past several weeks, notices were sent out by Latah Sanitation to approximately 456 Moscow and garbage recycling customers, directing that the roll carts be moved from the alleys to the street for collection. Since that time, in part because of the street parking situation in certain neighborhoods complicated by the lack of driveways and inaccessibility of residences to the street, the decision to terminate alley pickup of roll carts has come into question. The recent snowfall and resulting ice and snow berm accumulation has also raised additional concerns. In light of the recent concerns and complications, City Council asks that the alley collection notices be suspended until the issue could be revisited. On Tuesday, January 5th, 2016, the mayor, city supervisor, and myself met with management from Latah Sanitation to discuss the issue and notify them of this action. New notices affirming this decision have been sent to those affected. This was also reviewed by Public Works Finance Committee on January 11th, 2016, which recommended suspension of termination of alley service until further notice and City Council direction. With that, I will be glad to answer any questions of the council.
Dan, I'll turn it over to you for a moment, because that was on Monday, January 11th, a week ago yesterday, it was discussed.
It was. And, you know, we had a lot of folks in the audience from those neighborhoods worried that, you know, that we were going to continue on with that proposal to collect from the alleys, but, you know, it kind of made sense to continue to do it, especially with the, you know, parking's a little bit more, a little bit different in that area, because there's parking on both sides of the street, and we could understand how, you know, having those carts out there would, I mean, it almost seemed like it would be harder for trash pickup, honestly, than, not only that, but as Walter mentioned, folks might have to drag their totes through their living room to get them out to the front yard, you know, to the street. So, you know, we recommended the suspension of it until further notice, and Tim, I think, said, you know, 90 to 120 days, we'd be able to work something out as far as a definitive decision, as far as whether to continue, you know, for the most part, probably it would continue in the alleys, but there may be some little sections where the street pickup may still work, but it's going to be a little bit of an ongoing discussion and research in that matter. But we did recommend to suspend the alley pickup, or to not suspend alley pickup, to continue with that as it's going right now.
Okay. Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if we need to beat this horse. We heard from more people, I think, on this topic than anything I can remember, with the exception of the Palouse or Ballfields.
At least in the last year.
Or more than the last year, people that we never hear from about anything else. I had people contact me that I've known for decades that live in Moscow I never see or hear from, and the first line of their email was, "I bet you can't believe I'm writing you, and I bet you can't believe it's about trash." So, they literally came out of the whole neighborhood explaining their problems with the proposed switch to get out of the alleys. I made a comment at the committee, besides the living room, when that I was watching my rearview mirror for police cars, because I was out driving around the alleys of Fort Russell, which I'd never done in my life, to try to see what the situation was, how the garbage cans or totes were situated, and then went around to the front of the house to look and see what the front looked like. In addition to Dan's comment about the amount of cars parked on those street fronts, and the fact that, I wondered where are they going to sit totes that a mechanical emptying truck can get a hold of them without hitting a car? There are fences, and there are, you know, decades-old landscaping and everything in the world between the backyard and the front yard, and that's where the, through the living room comment came from, that if we want them to keep these garbage totes and center, the single-stream recycled totes out of sight, and they put them in the backyard, there's just no way to get around the side of most, a lot of those houses. It's just the way the neighborhood is. So, the comments, I believe, Dan, that Tim made, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, about 90 to 120 days, had to do with looking to see if there were any current alley pickups that could be moved to the front of houses, where the circumstances that were pointed out to us were not as acute as appears for the entire area, perhaps there are a few blocks or a street or something where some changes could be made. I do not wish to have this drug out for three or four months, so I'm going to make a motion tonight that we officially do not move the 456 residents' garbage and single-stream cart recycling from the alleys to the streets, but they remain in the alleys until such time as a very clear ability to make a change on particular areas be identified.
Second.
Further conversation in the council? Walter, here's a motion I have from you, if I wrote this down, I do not move the 456 recycling and garbage collection folks from the alley to the street, leave them as they are.
Until such time. Until such time as, as, whatever, you said, specific reasons for making any change back to the streets is identified. In other words, they're just going to stay in the alley. If Tim comes along and says the 400 block of Cherry Street, and we've gone and talked to the people, and they're okay with it, and we can move them to the, to the street, then I'm okay with working that out.
And that's your understanding on the second, Catherine?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have that? Okay, Lori? Okay, I think we're ready to go. John, I'll start to roll with you.
Aye.
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 And I.
Okay, we'll move forward with that. Thank you very much, Tim.
If I may, with one more comment, Your Honor. The 90 to 100 days that I did explain at committee was more of a, changing these 456 customers from alley to streets was just a portion of it. We also, we, I say LSI, designed completely new routes with single-stream coming on board. So the 90 to 100 days, what we're going to be looking at is switching those routes back to try to gain the most efficiency that we can continuing alley pickup.
Okay. And that's correct.
I think everybody understands.
That was what I understood, I just didn't state it very well a while ago, that where we've told some people, we're going to pick you up on Tuesday instead of on Monday, we may end up going back. And I wanted the people that were here and the people that read the newspaper to realize that now that we've had the vote, they're going to, we're going to stay with alley pickup, but your day may change or your route situation may change somewhat.
Okay, in the future. Okay. Everybody's clear on that?
Yep.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Okay, that was our last agenda item, I believe. We will go, I know we had council reshuffling and commissions and stuff. Do we have, anybody's got any reports? Jim, you got any?
I've got a couple of things. I went to the Pathways Commission last Tuesday, and they continued on with the plan to rehabilitate the flower gardens at this Berman Creekside Park along the Paradise Path. They're still continuing to work on that, but can't do much in the wintertime. And Dwight Curtis brought in an additional agenda item about the proposed Peekaboo Estates and the bike paths and sidewalks through, through that proposed development, and they were approved by the Pathways Commission as something that would be workable. That's about what went on there. And at the Transportation Commission-
Jim, if I may?
Yeah.
Where's Peekaboo?
It's off of Orchard.
Oh.
On the right.
Okay, on the right. Okay, thank you.
As you're going north.
It would be running east from Orchard. Right across from Highland.
Thank you.
That helps. The Transportation Commission met, and Les McDonald continued on with his wayfinding signage for the Greenway, and the Transportation Commission has made huge progress there in, in terms of getting the signage reduced to something that's reasonable, and I think they'll probably be moving forward with that before the year's out.
Very good. Dan?
We just had the one committee meeting last week, Public Works and Finance, and everything was in the consent agenda, other than the roll cart talk that we had in that meeting. Other than that, on the 12th, I had the 1912 Committee, which pretty much we were just working on basic maintenance items we talked about, but also were, you know, they're that close to having basically the entire shell completely done, and that includes all the, all the windows being replaced. So that's pretty exciting to get that all done. And then they're going to start talking about what they're going to do to those upper two floors and what kind of, what's going to happen there. And then also that day, I had the Arts Commission meeting, and they, there was Rod Bacon from Pullman came in to talk about the fact that Beasley Coliseum isn't working quite as it should as far as performing arts. So he wanted to propose some sort of joint thing between the cities of Moscow and Pullman, and this, you know, this is just his proposal, nothing, and nothing's come of it yet, but if anybody had any ideas, he'd like to do some sort of performing arts coliseum, a newer one, somewhere between Moscow and Pullman, and his, his idea was right there at where the Airport Road meets the highway there by Plaid Electric, you know, at that signal there. And, you know, we talked about other stuff, they, Iris Mays will now be the chair of that committee, and they are still fighting over who gets to be secretary because that's everybody's favorite job, so. Other than that, that's all I got.
John?
Oh, yeah. Planning and zoning met on January 13th, and a few things of note, they had election of officers, and Wendy McClure is going to be the new chair. And then there was a discussion about bringing in some of the city's snow removal people and to have a discussion about the snow removal and the garbage totes that we've been talking about here, and also snow removal in the twin homes that are starting to show up here in town, and how it is more and more difficult to remove snow from in front of them and still leave an area where people can park in their driveways, and so that will probably be coming on. And then there's a public hearing and on a comprehensive plan, property on 3151 and 3225 Robinson Lake Road about annexing that into the city, and the staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended adoption with no conditions. The next thing I've got is the agenda for the Human Rights Commission, and that meeting happened at 4 o'clock today. It was a rather short meeting. The, probably the biggest piece of information is good information, the Martin Luther King Breakfast, and all of the attendant things having to do with it was a great success. They had a sold-out breakfast, and the only complaint that I heard was that with some of the awards given to the kids for either their writing or their art, it was not explained because there was lack of room to put it on the internet. So that wasn't there. And then the, Ken Fauntz, the Chair of the Committee, wants to have a Martin Luther King Day of Service in 2017, and he wants to make that a city program. That's going to be his project for 2016, and he wants to have that happen on Martin Luther King Day a year from now. And then the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency had a meeting on January 7th, and we just re-elected the officers, the chairperson, the assistant, and the secretary that we've had before, so Steve McGeehan will continue as the Chair of the Urban Renewal Agency. The, Gary gave us a pretty good report on the Redevelopment Association of Idaho, and then we got a report from Sangria about their process and their progress in putting up a, a building there on the corner of Sixth and Jackson that will have a restaurant on the bottom and some apartments up above it. And with the help of our city planner, they're working with a couple of financial institutions to put a package together that will work for everybody, and we, at the city, we've got, Gary, we're a little bit behind, aren't we, on the, getting the go-ahead from ITD or from the environmental people from the state of Idaho because they kind of changed rules?
Yeah, I'd have to forget that to Bill since he's handling the environmental remediation piece of it.
But we're kind of waiting on two things at this point, aren't we? We've got the financial situation that Sangria is trying to work out, and then we've also got the test wells in the property, and we have to see how the data from those come out. Is that correct?
Correct. Phase two of the remediation work included our groundwater pump and treat system. We had hoped to have that installed before the holidays. That was delayed, so construction will begin on that next week. Once that system is installed, then the agency will pursue obtaining the certificate of completion and covenant, not to sue, that would then allow for the property to be redeveloped. So that is anticipated to take about two to three months to negotiate through that process. So the full remediation work should be wrapped up somewhere in April to May. Okay. Thank you.
Sure, I took so much time, but that's all I've got.
Okay, good. John, we'll move on then. Catherine? You haven't had a chance to do anything really yet.
I just got the appointment.
Yes, okay. Very good. Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Retaining my liaison with the fire department, I attended their board meeting on Monday, January 11th. It's always fun to do that. We have a great volunteer fire department, a lot of students that serve as residents, a lot of local residents that have served on that fire department as volunteers for decades. And I attempt to listen to a lot of their calls just to keep up with what's going on and what they're doing, and I commented to them that during the holidays, when a lot of the students were gone, there weren't very many residents, the number of people that were turning out for calls did not even seem to diminish, that they did a great job of backing up and providing the necessary manpower and woman power to cover both fire and ambulance. One thing the chief pointed out was that, was it, was it 70% Dan, of their calls are overlapping? In other words, if they get one, well, before they've completed it, another one comes? So they have a lot of, on top of, calls either, you know, in the same neighborhood or on the other side of town or something. So when you see one of the firefighters or one of the ambulance people, thank them for their service. I did attend on Wednesday, the 13th, my first Farmers Market Commission meeting. I happened to stop by Kathleen's office with a question, and she said, "Are you coming tomorrow afternoon?" And I said, "To what?" And she informed me it was the Farmers Market Commission, and since I was going to be appointed to that, I went ahead and attended. They are looking toward a planning meeting with regards to updating the vendor fee schedule that will happen in the next week, next month to six weeks, to get that done in time for budget, Gary, and for the fee changes in October. And then they're also working on any commission recommendations and changes of policies for the 2016 market season. There's some tweaking that's going on there, working with the city attorney to redo some of the verbiage and some of the ways that those things are cast in the policies. So it was a, an interesting meeting, a good introduction to what the things that they're working on. And that's all I've got.
Okay, good enough. Well, I want to comment on January 6th, we had the quarterly breakfast at the University in Best Western, Chambers Wells University and the city kind of collaborated in talking about some of the things that we're doing together, which was a wonderful breakfast. And then Martin Luther King Breakfast on the 16th, and we had a bunch of winners, somebody, you were there.
I was there. My student won the upper elementary art and essay category.
That was very, and that was, that's always fun for me to give out both the art awards and the essay awards and talk about some portions of the essays that these kids write, and it really, it's one of the highlights, one of the fun events that I get a chance to go to every year and I really look forward to. But as John had said, it was very, very well attended. A big crowd there, it was very nice.
And the speaker, Alicia Garza.
Yep.
Quite profound.
She gave a wonderful, Alicia Garza gave really quite a talk. With that, Gary, do you have anything?
No, sir. Just to remind the council that AIC Day at the Legislature will be next week.
Next week.
So the mayor, myself, I believe Art Bettke, Walter Steed, I believe that's, oh, Jim Boland's going as well.
And John.
John, are you going?
I'm going. Well, hey, I just talked to Art on the phone today, and he was wondering when he was going to be acting mayor. Well, we'll have to revise that a little bit now.
Catherine and I hold down the floor.
Yep. Dan and Catherine are going to have to hold for down here in the city, because the rest of us are going to be gone down to Boise. Trying to work through lots of good things with those fine folks down there.
So again, if there are any issues that, legislative issues that need to be fleshed out, worked on, or prepare packets for, please let us know. But other than that, no, I don't have anything else.
Okay. With that, I would make a motion adjourned to executive session per Idaho Code 74, Dice 206, 1B, and 1C, and 1F. This meeting will not continue once that executive session is done.
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned, folks, at 8:00.